Good afternoon. It is three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyerhoffen.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have Quorum.
Seeing that all five directors are present, we'll skip item three. Also skip item four and do that on Monday. Item five, rules of procedure, counselor?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the board, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given the opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wanting to address the board?
President Sewell, there are no members of the public online.
Thank you. Employee recognition, item seven, we will do on Monday. Moving on to action items, item eight. Public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero one, establishing rules and regulations for sewer service. It is recommended to conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero one, amending ordinance two thousand eight dash two, establishing the rules and regulations for sewer service, Article Six Industrial Discharges. Do we have a staff report?
Uh, we do have a presentation. I know typically when we have a um, public hearing, we usually only do those things on Monday so we can all get to everything written in the record. However, uh, because we've received comments from a variety of different folks, uh, we thought it important to bring it today. So if there's any changes leading into Monday, we can make sure that those are recorded properly. So with that, I would turn it over to our engineering manager for presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, President Sewell, members of the board. Let's see, let's try to share my screen. There we go. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so um, thank you, General Manager Macy. Uh, Article Six of the uh, overall sewer service rules and regulations pertains to industrial discharges. And on March eighteenth, the board will hold a public hearing on adopting the revisions to Article Six. So there are several sections within the article that were updated and provide more clarity and significant changes, and the significant changes are uh, what the definition of industrial waste is. That wasn't clear before, and now we're providing some more clarity to it. As well as um, an application and developing and establishing an application permit uh, process. But more importantly, Article Six uh, updates the district's discharge and constituent limits. So you might have, you might remember this slide from previous uh, from our previous presentation back in December. Um, on the left-hand side are the current constituents, basically what is in Article Six now. And then the proposed constituents is on the right. So uh, I'll go into this a little bit more in detail. So constituent levels uh, were modified to clarify the contaminant levels that our system can be allowed to receive. For clarification, the district usually cannot accept untreated cannabis wastewater as it exceeds our existing and proposed regulations. So what we hope to accomplish here uh, with our new regulations is to add clarity and acceptable uh, to the acceptable discharges, discharge limits, and work with the operators to meet the limit, to have them meet the limits and have them meet them at in an economically feasible manner. So you'll see uh, under proposed constituents, you'll see two, uh, you'll see a total of three items. Item B is ammonia nitrogen. And uh, that limit and that constituent was added. It wasn't in the old uh, Article Six, so we're adding it to the new Article Six. As well as total nitrogen. Uh, ammonia is at four forty-five milligrams uh, per liter and total nitrogen is at sixty milligrams per liter. You'll also notice that under item F is the total dissolved solids. Now we, now in the old Article Six, we have that as well. However, uh, the limit is changing. So in the old limit, total dissolved solids is four hundred milligrams per liter plus the yearly average of dissolved solids in the water supply. So if the water supply has already has an existing limit, has an existing um, uh, total dissolved solids of one hundred milligrams per liter, then the total dissolved solids is five hundred. So it's one hundred from our water supply plus the four hundred. So that's our existing limit uh, for total dissolved solids. Now it's going to be a flat six hundred and sixty-five uh, milligrams per liter. Our industrial discharge limits include ammonia nitrogen, which is new, total nitrogen, which is new as well as a reduced total dissolved solid limit. Um, and those are, those are being revised so that they are more in line and it and mirror and dovetail with our recent requirements issued by the state uh, to the Horton and Wright uh, treatment facilities. And then uh, another minor section was uh, modified and at um, modified where the verbiage was added to amend conditions of a facility discharge permit if necessary. So uh, an industrial discharge permit would be more of a kind of a living document and as their processes change and as uh, technology changes as well as state requirements change uh, that we have to abide to, then this section, uh, section six point oh seven would allow the district to revise those uh, conditions to the facility. So back in December, um, back in December, we presented this uh, Article Six revision to the board. Um, in January, on January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, staff posted on the district's website the draft updates to Article Six. And staff also posted through the Desert Sun notice of the notice for the March eighteenth board meeting where the Board of Directors will consider adoption of the amended ordinance number um, uh, two thousand eight dash oh two, more specifically Article Six Industrial Discharges. So on Monday, uh, staff would recommend that the board adopt the amended Article Six to the rules and regulations. Um, are there any questions?
Do we have any questions from the board? Director Martin? Director Meyer? Director Duff?
Thank you. Um, I only have a couple comments, and I'm sorry for the ninth hour in this. Thank you so much for the work and presentation. Very clear. I appreciate that. Um, but I just have a couple uh, concerns. On section six point oh five and six point oh six for the actual permit, I want to make sure that the permit itself will contain a signature line for the W D I D holder as well as the user. Um, in some, in just in some of these uh, businesses in our area, they have one parcel assigned a W D I D number, but they have maybe six separate discharging entities that would be getting permits from us. So I want to make sure that the person responsible for the W D I D number is also a signator on the permits along with the user. Um, then in section six point one six regarding enforcement, particularly paragraph B. Uh, let's see, I just want to be clear about this. It's regarding the cease and desist orders. Um, this is great. But I had a few concerns that I'm hoping we can write into the final version for Monday or amend. I'm not sure how we do the process. Correct me if I am wrong in the terminology. Um, but we should probably change where it says at least a thousand to not to exceed maybe mirroring what the state says to ten thousand. Um, by saying at least, I think it might be considered ambiguous and i- if we say not to exceed, it might be a little more uh, potentially enforceable and clear. Um, also, we want to, I I would like to see somehow where we are coordinating communication regarding ce- cease and desist orders with the municipality also licensing the individual and potentially if necessary, the the state regarding the W D I D number so that the entities can all be working together if there are issues that need to be addressed and corrected. Um, and then the only other concern question or request to add would be where it's talking about um, third line down property owner jointly. Um, I think it should say property owner, W D I D holder at or a business, uh, let's see, permit holders and the W D I D number. And then have it be severable. I don't know what your opinion. This would be six one six B, six point one six B, under the enforcement of cease and desist orders. I'm just wondering if we need to be more clear since there aren't really definitions of who we're considering to be the user versus the owner versus the W D I D holder. Do we need to say severable? Um, or list the three potential people that would be involved in the permit? And then lastly, should we be including some sort of an indemnification in this process to where uh, they indemnify us, the user would identify us from the local state federal government guidelines that they have to follow? I don't know if those are possible.
So, and Director, thank you so much for your questions. You called me earlier this morning and asked me about at least the 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 fine issue. Uh, in talking with legal counsel, we were looking through the document. The ten thousand dollar number up to is actually in our enforcement section. So we, what we're going to do is we're going to go through the revised section six and remove the enforcement as it's already part of a later portion here. However, some of the things you were asking for about asking for specific numbers and things like that, we can add into this document and we'll do so. Also, when we um, are going through this process, when someone applies for a discharge permit, there is a document that can include some of the language that you just referenced. So we'll make sure that it's part of that document because that is something that they physically sign and give us. So we'll just make sure that that is included in that report that they have to provide us. That also goes to the state. So I think we can address all your questions. So thank you.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure coordinated the fine orchestra that has gone into place to make this happen for our community. Thank you.
So I I concur with 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 what the general manager said, but I think what likely would happen, if you agree, would be that section, just to give you a heads up, is that section six point one six under enforcement would just come out. Because it's already covered under Article eleven. Is that?
That's correct. But I know there were some other requirements that you were talking about, and I I want to make sure if they're not already part of the requirement of the document that we received, that they're in here. So we know we've captured it somewhere and we are modifying this entire document. So this would be for this.
Yeah, there's
This would be the right time.
Some of these businesses, particularly in our area, where the W D I D number is assigned to the entire parcel and they won't assign it to the individual license holders. So we have to kind of make sure that we're holding both accountable to to following and ensuring guidelines are met.
And we're struggling with that right now, knowing that one entity, not all entities are not meeting the pre-treatment limit. How do you handle that and shut that just them off versus the entire group? So that would allow us to go after them specifically. So appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Griffin?
Oh, I have nothing.
And I have nothing further. Uh, thank you, Eric. And then uh, just to clarify it so that new changes will go in um, to our packet for Monday.
Correct. We'll update the packet to include the ordinance, which will be removing and replacing in its entirety and then also adding some language if necessary after talking to legal counsel later today.
And I'll uh, open public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Still no members of the public online.
Thank you, Dory. We'll close public comment. Moving on to item nine. Mission Springs Water District, two thousand twenty-four Strategic Plan Adoption. It is recommended to adopt this two thousand twenty-four strategic plan. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Government Affairs Public Outreach Manager to take this item.
There we go. Good afternoon, uh, President Sewell, members of the board. In your packet today is a copy of the latest version of our strategic plan. The document is the culmination of input from the board management and staff. The plan provides clear strategy, direction, and priority for completing tasks and ensuring clarity for our team. The document focuses on seven core smart goals, including enhanced customer communications, ensuring a diverse water supply, long-term financial stability, technology and process improvements, and workforce excellence. Today I am asking that you adopt the plan so that we can begin the implementation process. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Director Duff?
Really great work. I love the changes and amendments that that were added to our previous draft, and I have no questions. Thank you.
Vice President Griffin?
We'll burst snow somewhere. Uh, great job. No questions.
Director Martin?
I have nothing.
Director Meyerhoffen?
Yes. I'm trying to find it now. I did mark it down, but it was in the environmental part. Where you spoke of uh, I knew I marked it down. Anyways, we, you spoke of uh, I'm trying to find it now. I don't know.
Page forty or forty-one?
It's only this thick. I don't know how I could have lost it. Well, anyways, well, I I thought it was right here in the environmental, it'll be. It was you in another section I'm speaking.
I do, yeah. Uh, page twenty-five of the actual plan itself starts.
Where you were speaking of uh, wow. I don't see it there either. Um, anyways, we're speaking about the uh, things that we're going to do environmentally in the future and talking about solar panels, you know, we're doing that. I would like to have seen more of them. What we're trying to, and I I did notice a section in there where you spoke of using the activated water and reclaiming our our water. I'd like to see a little bit more of a mention in there about that, and that's more of an environmental issue.
So like stormwater capture?
Yeah, that also. But when we recycle that stormwater capture, we put on our park system or out at the schools. I think that should be mentioned in there because basically when the, when our guys go out into the field, this is kind of their guideline that so some of this is the guideline to communicate with the uh, customers, correct? You know, are this, the strategic plan is really for
Well, it's it's direction for employees and it guides us in our decision.
Their knowledge they get from this will be transferred over to our customers when they go to hang a flyer on the door or they have a problem and they talk to them and somebody brings up the, what are you doing environmentally? And I think we're going to be seeing more environmental issues coming up in the in the future in the next few years. So the uh, reclaiming the water, stormwater, and maybe I know it's in the future. All this is, you don't take a lot of money to do all these projects. But it's just to let the people know that we are looking at it. We we haven't forgot it. We do realize the concern because they they have been asking these questions on social media sometimes. Um, another one would be to uh, make our uh, our slug and turn it into compost. So I think that should be added in there. There's also a a section in there where where it spoke of when we build something, that we're building it basically to green standards. Didn't, you didn't mention the green in there. Like, there's kind of a true half-truth there because when I ask about the critical service center, we're not building it to the green standards. So that kind of is a little conflicting thing there. And so I think we should also mention in there where where you feel appropriate is that we are going to be uh, in compliance with California's uh, environmental laws, the SECL, and that we will be building the best to our ability within the lead green guidelines.
I think I've captured what you've, what you'd like. What I'll do is on Monday, I'll bring back a revised version with the red line on those. And then as a group, you basically can look at that and tell me if I caught.
I'll look through this again and send you a quick message you were referring to.
No problem.
I believe I lost.
And I just have a a big thank you to Marion and Katie and really all the staff that helped to provide input to creating this. I think it's um, a step above our previous strategic plan, and I'm excited for it to be implemented. So, thank you.
Yes, and there was also one part in there that I was reading where we're already working on it. So we'll be able to cross that off of our list before long. Anybody remember where that was at? That was we deal with, but we're already working on it. We'll bring it up next.
Thank you, Tim.
So we're ready to get cross something off of our strategic plan here before long. I think General Manager Macy knows between that.
And um, we'll open public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item nine?
No, sir.
Close public comment and move on to item ten. Contract amendments for construction and construction support and inspection services for the well forty-two project. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute contract amendments with A E Com Technical Services, Envirologic Resources, and T K E Engineering for additional engineering services during construction and with roll apart buildings for additional construction support and inspection services during the construction of the well forty-two project in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, myself and uh, our engineering manager, Eric Weck, is available for any questions. Uh, Eric, are you going to give a quick summary of where we're at? I know we carried over this issue from last month.
Yes, General Manager Macy. Uh, just got a few speaking notes that I can go over, uh, just to refresh everyone's memory. Thank you, sir. Uh, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. So in last month's board meeting, there was a question regarding our consulting project manager um, and the additional information and details that were provided for that contract amendment. So just briefly, during the two years that the project was on hold, which was initiated by the district, T K E representing the district did indeed have meetings with the project team and contractors when it was necessary to answer questions to revise the project requirements to accommodate for the the change in scope that was initiated by the district. So uh, they uh, they performed a water modeling analysis to check the flow rates and head conditions for the change to a four hundred horsepower pump. As well as analyzing uh, analysis and coordinate coordination with M S W D Engineering and Operations at the time on using well forty-two to pump both to the uh, fourteen hundred and twelve forty pressure zones. As a construction, as a consulting project manager for well forty-two, they coordinated with A E Com, which was the project designer on the changes in design plans and updating the project specifications to account for the change in scope of construction, which includes several rounds of Q A Q C going back and forth on plan check comments and things like that. Uh, they also prepared responses to requests for information from the contractor as a result of the change in scope and issuing construction bulletins as they relate to the electrical, change in electrical, well pumping and lubrication system. They also prepared responses to submittals from the contractor as they relate to the well electrical, well pumping and lubrication and security systems. They reviewed and processed change order requests as they relate to the demobilization, site drainage, uh, well electrical pumping, lubrication drainage and security systems. And they attended meetings with M S W D, A E Com, which was the designer, Lane Christensen, which was the contractor, Roll Apart Buildings, which is the vendor that's providing the uh, building around the the well, Tesco and others. Uh, so they also kept track of, since they were the project managers for the district, they were also responsible for keeping track and communicating with Kazamar, which is the district's labor labor compliance consultant during this time. So if approved, the construction is anticipated to restart within the next several weeks. And there's about uh, four to five months remaining construction work left on the project. Uh, are there any questions?
Director Martin, any questions? Director Meyerhoffen?
No.
Director Duff?
I just have one simple question, actually. Do we have the parts that we were waiting for?
I believe we do.
They've arrived?
Uh, they should be in the contractor's uh, um, construction yard.
Possession. Okay, thank you.
Vice President Griffin?
Of course. Uh, Eric, are yours, are you, are you answering on behalf of T K E today?
Uh, no, sir. I'm answering on behalf of um, what I know in terms of the project and and uh, my relative involvement with it.
Okay. Um, are they here?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, good afternoon.
I I I just have some questions about on the invoices, just for clarification. Um, I see there's multiple charges where it says for coordination. But um, I'm sure that means something to you all, but it doesn't really specify to us what that really means. Can you explain so we have a better idea what that means when you say I coordinate with uh, like project coordination? Um, there's a lot of coordinated with this one or coordinated with that one, but it's, there's no like details that give us an idea of what that entail.
So the coordination is anything related to R F I's uh, ref- request for information, request for clarification? Uh, reviewing submittals or excuse me, discussing submittals between the district, the design engineer and the contractor, and also um, anything as it relates to labor compliance. So it's just, you know, when it goes into an our invoice or we put in on our timesheet, we just kind of codified as coordination, but it's anything related to the construction management duties. If you needed a more detailed breakdown, we could go back through our our kind of bi-weekly notes that when we meet with the district to give you ideas of the specific work tasks that were being done um, on those specific months.
I ask because there's some stuff where it's really descriptive, so you got to get an idea. And then there's others where it just says coordination. So I think maybe it would be helpful in the future, just a little more descriptor. So if we're looking at this, I do want to ask about bulletin six. Um, and that first appears, uh, I think on eleven twenty-eight with preparation. Can you tell me about bulletin six?
Yes, uh, can you bear with me for one second to pull up my notes?
Okay, bulletin six is related to the main change where we switched from an oil lubricated well system to a water, water lubricated system. So there were several drawing sheets that had marked out that it was going to be an oil lubricated system. That included the site plan, the well details, and then the mechanical details, and then specific details to the well lubrication system. Those all had to be updated by A E Com. So there was a lot of coordination back and forth of A E Com to get those plan sheets updated. And then also for the specifications for the change in the vertical turbine pump. The pump, the bowl, the column, the shaft, everything had to be updated from what is required from an oil lubricated system to a water lubricated system. Um, so that was the, that was the focus of bulletin number six.
Okay, and then just so it's, it seemed to have taken quite some time. So we, you started on eleven twenty-eight. Um, coordinated on it on twelve fifteen. Um, prep markups two months later, it February ninth, and then coordinated with A E Com on that. And then three months later, um, did the revised bulletin. So that's kind of like a six months process. Is that standard to take so long? Or was it just kind of other stuff was going on and you're waiting for replies?
Um, other stuff that was going on, we were waiting on replies. The big change was the contractor was making the contractor was making a recommendation or with the switch to water pump that we may want to consider a water flush lubrication as opposed to a standard water loop where the water cascades versus something that is actually physically flushing water on the bearings and whatnot to, to last longer, to provide better efficiencies and, um, longevity with the well pumping equipment. So we had spent some time kind of going back and forth with different contractors and vendors to identify if that made sense for this well because it comes at a higher cost.
Okay, just curious because it seemed like a long time because right as soon as you did the, um, we're prepping the revised bulletin, you were on bulletin seven already. So I wasn't sure kind of why there was such a, it seems, six months seems a while to me, but I also know that there's always delays. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have nothing further. Just, uh, thank you for all the additional information and, uh, thank you for the presentation, Eric. We'll open public comment. Do we have any public wishing to speak on item ten?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and move on to item eleven. Accept annual comprehensive financial, financial report for year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. It is recommended to review and accept the annual comprehensive financial report as presented by Rogers, Anderson, Malody and Scott LLP. Arturo?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell and distinguished members of the board. Uh, it is my pleasure to introduce, uh, Sean Schmidt and Gardenia Duran, uh, with Rams, who are here to present the, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, annual comprehensive financial report, uh, the first, uh, that we're presenting and hopefully uh, of many from here on out. Um, the report that I provided to you, uh, points out the one main change that we had from the previous report that we presented. Uh, one of the footnotes had some information that was not completely accurate. So we did go through, uh, with a fine tooth comb and basically went through everything to make sure that everything was in line. Uh, the other major changes, which are pretty insignificant, uh, were the page numbers. Once we confirmed every, all the documents were in the correct pages. Um, and also the, uh, in, uh, we wanted to, in the, uh, transitional pages that had titles, took an opportunity to provide pictures, to provide other works that the district is doing. It gives the public a better picture of, you know, that section, what's going on with the district. So just the major items. Uh, and from here, I'll just pass it on to Sean, who's gonna give you a, uh, presentation on the, uh, report itself. Sean?
Thank you, Arturo. Um, and good afternoon, members of the board. Uh, let me share my screen so I can present, show you guys my PowerPoint while fixing. Can you guys see my screen or is it not working?
It's not coming through.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I'm not, just a little bit of technical difficulties using Zoom. Bear with me. I do apologize.
We can see it now.
Oh, perfect. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the district for giving us the opportunity to provide auditing services and to recognize how well it was getting to work with management.
They're aware, you, you, the way they're showing it right now, your notes are showing. I think you need to do, um.
Yeah, presentation, ma'am.
I am so sorry, guys. Uh, bear with me while I, I try to fix this.
Perfect.
Sharing.
And it's, it's better on our end now.
Okay, can you guys see the correct screen now? Yes.
Yeah, we can see it, Sean.
Garden, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see your screen. We can hear you again. I think that, um, you lost connection for a second. Go ahead. You can't see your screen?
All right, I think I figured it out. Um, it says that it's showing the correct screen. Can you guys still hear me okay? Yes. Or is my connection good?
Yes.
I can hear you. Uh, Garden, are you able to, uh?
Yes, I, um, Sean, I, I, I'll, I'll do the presentation for you. Unless you want to come over to my office for a second.
Yeah.
I think he's having technical difficulties.
Right, we'll give him a minute to get that corrected.
I were waiting for that, Arturo. One of the things that this doc, you were telling me that this document will allow us to do is different than what we did last year with the GFLOA. That was one certificate. This will allow us to get a secondary certificate, one a little bit more prestigious. Can you go into that?
Uh, yeah, uh, obviously the information that we're presenting and, uh, the comprehensive report uh, provides more detail than just the actual numbers. Uh, it provides, uh, background to the public and looking at all of the projects we are doing. And it also ties it to the strategic plan, uh, which is again round circle of everything that we're doing, uh, and all the changes that we're doing to implement. Uh, it will go into the budget to show, uh, you know, the focus of the budget, why we're spending certain amounts and on certain areas more than others, uh, part of the strategic plan, uh, and that certificate lets anyone looking at the district, then when they go and look at another district, uh, that has the same certificate, we've gone through those rigorous uh, reviews, not only from, um, the auditors, but also from, uh, other agencies, uh, in the same, uh, categories, just to make sure that it's in line. Anyone looking at our financials can understand the same thing that we have means the same with another district, uh, pretty much consistency is what they're looking for. And, um, the, uh, our auditors are actually part of the community that reviews these for other districts. So they, they went through this report also very particular to make sure that we had everything that we are required to have in order to apply for that certificate.
Thank you.
Hi, Arturo. I brought Sean over to my desk. Um, he's hard of hearing on one ear, so he has a specific device that he uses to, um, listen. So I think that that's probably what, um, stopped working at his computer. But he was very excited to do this presentation, so it allowed him to do a piece of it. But, um, as Arturo was saying, you know, one of the biggest things that you should be very proud of as a district is, you know, that conversion that you have from your basic financial statements to that, you know, what they call ACER, the annual comprehensive financial report. It really creates a different level of transparency for your district. So, um, all of this is, um, made possible by the GFLOA, an organization that has helped for many, many years, um, for governments to reach a different level of transparency. It requires additional disclosures. In addition to that, every year, your financial statements go through the review of management. It goes through a review of us as auditors. And then it also goes through the review of, um, a third party, which they will look at everything in detail. So as a firm, we are part of the volunteers for the GFLOA that do these reviews. And so every year they look at a different area and they decide what they're gonna review in detail to make sure that they, um, improve on these statements. So, um, it's, it's one of those things where no matter how perfect your financial statements are, they will always find something because they're always trying to push you towards improvement. So it will definitely be a great tool for management to use to continue to have, um, transparent financial statements that are as clear as possible for you. So, um, we're really just gonna go over, um, some of the key points, um, of our audit. And, um, one of the pieces was going over our, um, the work that we perform at INRA. And so every year, you know, we come in and we have a lot of questions that increase our understanding of the entity. We test the controls in different areas, um, depending on where we see the major risks and usually are always related to contracts and payroll and things like that. So, um, that's just, you know, um, there are high risk areas for any entity. We test controls and, um, we review your systems in the various cycles. And from there, we determine, um, what the nature, extent and timing of our audit will be as far as how much we need to test at year end in order to, um, reach a reasonable assurance that your financial statements are reasonably stated. Um, our responsibilities are to review the financial statements in cases that we prepare the financial statements. Management reviews all the information and make sure that everything is accurate the way that, um, your team has done. Um, in addition to that, um, we have an audit team that performs the audit. Then everything gets reviewed by the partner. We also have a quality control partner that goes through all of our items. And then we develop an opinion as to, um, the reasonableness of your financial statements. So this year, we're happy to inform you that, um, we've given you in a modified opinion, which is actually the highest level of opinion that we can give, um, a government. The other communication that we will communicate with you is related to our SARS one fourteen letter is in it's our communications to those charged with governance. We will discuss any new pronouncements that you've put in place, which in your case was, um, GASB ninety-six, um, just the subscription based information technology arrangements. And, um, inform you of any difficulties we've had with management. Um, and we received the management representation letter. So we're also happy to inform that we, um, had no difficulties with your finance team. In fact, um, you have a great finance team. And so we wanted to say thank you to, um, Arturo and we wanted to make sure that, um, that the rest of your finance team, um, I know that one of the new additions that you have, um, has been Rita. And I guess we had two Anas, Anna M, Anna F and Claudia, um, all being led by Rachel. And so, um, you have a great team. And we did, you know, they, they just came in to assist Arturo with, you know, um, the finance and putting together these financial statements. And, um, we can't say anything but great things about them. So I think that, you know, you did a great job in selecting people, new people to come into your organization and help you improve.
Uh, thank you, Garden. Uh, if we can, uh, get a copy of the presentation for the board, um, when you're able to get, uh, that to us, um, that way you can go over the, uh, the actual balance sheet items and, uh, statement of revenues and expenses. That would be, uh, great.
Okay, I think, um, do you want to try to see if you can connect again, um?
Do we want to try today or do we want to bring it back on Monday?
Yeah, we can.
Give the presentation on Monday.
We can do it on Monday if, uh, if you prefer, uh, simply because, uh, the audit, uh, report is pretty much the final. The board has a copy of it. And if there's any, uh, questions or changes that they would like to make, uh, we can have them by Monday and provide the final, uh, report then for approval.
And do you think we could have someone maybe two thirty be available to do a trial run of their presentation just to see if we're gonna work out the bugs before?
Yeah, we'll do. And in fact, I'll also have a copy of it myself that I can share, uh, as I do the presentation just to make sure that we have it.
Great. Um, any questions or comments today, Director Duff?
I'm just very proud of all of the hard work that's gone into the transparency that is very evident and present, present in these reports. And, um, I love that it's something that I can look through and any of our residents or rate payers can look through and get a clear understanding of exactly all the hard work we're putting in and, and you guys are putting in on a day-to-day basis. And, and why rates are what they are and, and, and what we're looking at for the future. So very proud of the work you've done. Thank you for everything.
Vice President Griffin?
Uh, just kind of have to echo that. So it's been a lot of work, but it's, it's excellent. And, um, I do attribute that to you, Arturo. So thank you for all your hard work.
Director Martin?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Director Meyerhopp?
No, thank you. Glad to see you guys are hard at work.
And, uh, just to thank you, um, it's always good to hear good news about the district itself, but uh, the positive compliments for our staff, uh, just thank the entire finance department. So, thank you. And do we have, uh, we'll open public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close public comment and move on to item twelve. Notice of acceptance of the supplemental environment project. It is recommended to accept the supplemental environment project as complete and authorize the release of retention money held for RE Chafee Construction in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, thirty-five days after the filing, the notice of completion. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, our manager of engineering, Eric Weck, is available to answer any questions. Uh, as you read, that's pretty straightforward. The project's open and we just need to file the notice of completion. And as a mech- mechanism, we have to bring that to your attention. So, Eric?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Uh, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Um, item twelve on today's agenda pertains to the notice of acceptance for the supplemental environmental project. The SCP project is accepted sewer conversion project to mitigate potential groundwater impacts to, uh, from septic systems. So twenty-one properties were selected based on their proximity to existing water production wells and the feasibility to have them connected to the existing sewer collection systems that were currently in place. So on November seventh of two thousand twenty-three, construction began. On December seventh, construction was completed. So within thirty days, twenty-one properties were connected. Um, and they had their septic tanks abandoned and the properties were connected to the existing sewer system as well as their yards were, um, um, put back to normal as a result of the disturbance. So the contractor, RE Chafee, submitted a bid in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And all work was completed within that contract amount. There were no change orders, so the contingency is untouched. Staff would recommend that the board on Monday accept the project as complete and direct staff to execute the notice of completion for the project in the board mea- in the board meeting next week. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Director Martin, any question?
No.
Director Meyerhopp?
Uh, yes, have they already been paid?
Uh, they just submitted their invoice with two weeks ago. So yes. And then so that, that contingent, I'm sorry, that retention money is five percent of their total bid. And that retention money is used as a security to make sure that the contractor pays their subcontractors. And, uh, once, once they've been paid off by, you know, their, uh, invoice and the notice of completion has been, uh, filed and reported by the county of Riverside that is advertised in the newspaper and that basically tells the subcontractors and anybody affiliated with the project, hey, you've got thirty-five days to file a claim. And if you don't, then Mission Springs Water District will release the five percent retention on this back of the contract.
So if they've already been paid.
Oh, ninety-five percent. So we withhold, I'm sorry, sir, ninety-five, they are paid ninety-five percent of their contract amount. And Mission Springs withholds five percent and we only pay them their five, remaining five percent after the note, thirty-five days after the notice of completion's been filed.
What you're asking us to approve here is that they completed the work? They've already been paid, so they've completed the work. So it seems kind of like after the fact that we're looking at this.
This is a procedural thing related to the completion of construction. We come to the board, we inform the board, we're completed, and then we file with your concurrence the notice of completion. And that starts that thirty-five day window that Eric was making reference to. This is just a procedural thing that we do with every construction contract.
Okay, now that was a little confusing why.
I, I understand.
And I know I've seen this before, but maybe I just didn't look at it close enough.
No, it's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Director Duff? Director Duff, any comments, questions?
Yes, just one. Are the twenty-one property owners included in the notice to be sent of completion so that they have the same amount of time to file any grievances that they may have on their, on the work done in their properties? Or have we reached out to them independently to ensure that they're satisfied with the conclusion of the work to just ensure that it can all be closed and everyone walks away happy?
Yes, ma'am. As part of the construction, MSWD staff inspected the project, every, every single property. And they interfaced with the property owners. So after and on all the property owners were also noticed as well saying, hey, this is, this is an MSWD project. If you've got problems, reach out to us and we'll coordinate with the, with the contractor. So there has been interface and face time with the property owners.
And, and will they be included in the, in the notice then? Like, like subcontractors would be to give them like a final opportunity to come forward?
Typically, when we finish a construction project like this, we let, we let our customers in this particular case know that there is a warranty period and they understand how that warranty period would work. They would reach out to us and then we would go through our contractor to make sure that those things are fixed within the contract terms and conditions.
And in spite of releasing those final funds, we have the same warranty agreement with the contract?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Griffin?
Uh, thank you. Just a comment. I just want to note that uh, this was originally estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Today it's up to three hundred and ninety, which I know we were all shocked at the cost, but I think the most important thing to note is that this is due to failure to properly do someone's job or someone to fail, properly do their job that costs us this in the long run. And so uh, it's really important that everybody do their job, follow the regulations, uh, so that we don't have to go through this again.
And nothing further from me. Thank you very much, Eric. We'll open public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item twelve?
No, sir.
Thank you. Close public comment and move on to item thirteen. Quick claim, existing public utility easements on adjacent properties, APN six four two dash one nine two dash zero one nine and six four two dash zero, one nine two dash zero two zero. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to take necessary actions to record a permanent quick claim of the portions of the utility easements not in use by Mission Springs Water District for residential construction on real properties in the city of Desert Hot Springs. APN six four two dash one nine two dash zero one nine and six four two dash one nine two dash zero two zero. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask Eric Look, our director of engineering, to go through a presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Uh, so on today's agenda, item twelve pertains to a quick claim, quick claim of existing utility easements on neighborhood properties located on Quondo Way, located in the city of Desert Hot Springs. Presently, both neighboring properties described as assessors parcel numbers that were listed by President Sewell are vacant. The developer is proposing to construct a duplex building on each property and ask that MSWD vacate the easements on each property. The easements are not in use by MSWD and are not needed by the district to provide service to those properties. The developer has provided the district with a deposit of a thousand dollars in, in a reimbursable account to cover staff and recording fees. So to date, approximately four hundred dollars of staff time has been devoted to this project. Are there any questions?
Before we open up to questions, just to follow up on that, we've also been working with all the other utilities that could possibly be in that easement or using that easement in the future. They also have agreed to vacate that as well. So it's just not us, but it's other folks as well. So just letting that clarification.
Director Duff, any question?
Um, I did bring this to General Manager's attention earlier. I just had one observation in looking at the maps that I just kind of wanted to make sure we've double checked on our part. But if you look at where our service comes in and the location of lot three ninety-four's twenty-five foot easement, it is where the juncture is between our, our service line coming between lots one three two nine four, the address one three two nine four and one three 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 two on the color map. And so there's a juncture there where it's connecting to the, the perpendicular, the perpendicular line. And when you look at the much smaller map in the similar location further down where lots three eighty-one and eighty and eighty-seven and eighty-eight are, um, they have the same similar twenty-five foot smaller portion. So I just want to make sure, do we by any chance need that if we had to do repair work or could a potential fit breach at that juncture or junction point affect the property that potentially could be built on top of it? Have we just made sure and double checked that that there wasn't an intent that we possibly missed?
So are you describing the rear easement area?
Correct. The, the junction where it comes from Agua Cañando Road between address one three two nine four and one three 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 two on the color map. It seems to come from the street there into the, behind the property's main line. But that's a junction point where that twenty-five foot easement is. And I just want to make sure that it wasn't originally planned that way as a preemptive protective measure to ensure we would have access if that juncture fit. And I'm not an expert. This is just my looking at the very amazingly hand drawn plans from the nineteen fifties and thinking of what my grandfather must have been doing back then when he did similar residential plans and it's a beautiful work of art. But then looking at the, the similarities between those junction points, I just thought make sure please that we don't potentially need that.
Okay, um, I can check into that and, and if you're going to answer on Monday, but it doesn't look like uh, we would need them.
Eric, I think Danny's going to provide some clarity on that extra easement.
Hi, good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. This actually was reviewed by operations and we did look at our access. One of the bigger things that we want to look at or think about is the goal for the district as part of the master plan is to take all these rare easement water lines out and start moving towards that. We can't do that all at one time. But in this particular area, what we have in place, the access that we have in place is not much different than anywhere else. And it is adequate for the district to go ahead and be able to still maintain it on the upper.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Griffin? Director Martin?
Nothing.
Director Meyer Hoffman?
Well, my questions have been answered.
Thank you very much, Eric. We'll open public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on item thirteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items. Item fourteen, Nancy Wright, regional water reclamation facility update.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. We'll ask our construction manager, TKE Engineering, to handle this update. Terry?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Share my screen and we'll get that update going here. Is that coming through? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So for the February update on the regional water reclamation facility, uh, the contractor has completed the lining for both the headworks pump station and manhole. So we're uh, just about ready to receive water uh, into the, the headworks area now. Um, in addition, the contractor has brought out the manufacturer for the bar screen and they did some startup and testing uh, throughout the February month and got the bar screens up and running. Uh, in the SBR tanks, the contractor finished up installation for the valve actuators and the mixer actuators. And then they also completed the installation for the diffuser piping that we kind of looked at over the last couple of months there. On the right side, uh, we actually have clean water testing going on with those diffusers. They were running the air through each of the pipes, making sure that they were bubbling properly. And, uh, you know, ready for the sewer treatment facility. So once we get sewage in. Um, in the plant three W water and chemical feed testing. So the contractor was running through some of the testing of that plant three water. Again, that, that's the piping that just runs the tertiary treated water uh, coming out of the end of the treatment plant. And then they can reuse it onsite for some of the facility, hosing down some of the facilities and whatnot. So they completed all their testing on that. Um, in the grading area for the pond, so pond one is still being graded or continuing the operations there. And then also the channel excavation and grading is still underway and, you know, being rip wrapped. Uh, for the spring pond meter vault, the grading was finished up, grating, not grading, but G R A T I N G, grading was installed on the top of that metering system. And then the contractor poured the electrical pad where the future electrical equipment will be installed. For the site finishing work, we looked at some of the pilasters going in last month. Uh, the contractor has now installed all of the wrought iron fencing, fence posts and is getting ready for the tubular fence installation. And then they were doing some onsite grading, installing aggregate base for the roadway systems, getting that compacted. And then also installing the AC paving throughout the site. On the internal side for the operations building, the electrical wiring is still being wrapped up. They're getting close to completion on all of that electrical wiring. And then they do actually have, or they, they actually have started the test up and integration for the motor control center. Uh, in the lab and the control rooms, they are still wrapping up on some of the finishing touches for the lab. And then in the control rooms, they are running tests on all of the electrical, making sure that they have proper connectivity. For the conveyance line, uh, the contractor had finished work on Dylan Road and we've got the force main completely tested. Uh, they moved back into Little Morongo and are starting again on the VCP pipe installation. This is the thirty-three inch VCP pipe that is now being constructed. And then for the funding and permitting updates, so our agreement amendment for the FBA was submitted for the phase one portion of the work. And then reimbursement request number two, we're still waiting for final approval from the state, or I guess it would be processing, really not final approval, but processing. Uh, the quarter three invoice, again, that one has been submitted already. Uh, Q four invoice, uh, we're currently working with district staff on the final approval so that we can send that over to the state and get that submitted. Uh, it's looking like we should have that one submitted next week. Uh, for the WDR special provisions on monitoring well number three, we are coordinating the notary um, with the property owner for final signatures for the easement documents there. And then on the sampling for the private wells, uh, we're currently in, uh, works with the property owner to get the agreement signed. Uh, just as a side note, we are tracking for the Q one update for the regional water quality control board. Um, that is due by April fifteenth. So, uh, once we finish out the month of March here, we'll get working on that and make sure that that's submitted on time. Uh, for the phase two conveyance line, we are still in holding pattern, waiting for the state to give us our final approval for the FDA. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Director Martin?
Yeah, I have one, kind of refresh my memory. When are we anticipating a ribbon cutting for the project?
Uh, so they are doing some clean water testing now as we, we showed in there. Um, they're anticipating the dirty water testing uh, in the beginning first or second week of April, uh, at this point. And then they have a testing phase. I think it's thirty or sixty days. I'll have to double check into that. So uh, I, I don't think that we would have ribbon cutting until at least May, but most likely June.
Okay, thank you.
Director Martin, I believe we've tentatively set a ribbon cutting for June seventh.
Director Meyer?
Yes, in your, uh, first, uh, photo, you showed the landscaping in front. Can you show that again, please?
In, in the first photo?
Yes.
You're talking about this one here?
Yes, is that what the landscaping is going to look like?
Uh, this was an initial rendering. I don't know if it'll look exactly like this.
Listen up. I'm, I'm just concerned about that heat island. Anyways.
Uh, I could check into what landscaping has been proposed there, but this is just a, a generic rendering.
Generic. All right. And we're supposed to have a field trip down there, aren't we?
We, we can have a field trip. We talked about a field trip at a joint board meeting, but when we were trying to put that together with DWA, we could not find a date. So we just assumed that we would wait until the ribbon, ribbon cutting on June seventh. If the board would like to visit the site, they can either time one on one or we can set it up for the entire board. It's completely up to the will of the board.
Just got an email. It was asking you what days I would like to.
Good.
At the end of March or so, something.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can make it work.
And just to kind of retouch on that landscaping. So, um, the previous district comments on the landscaping have been incorporated into, uh, the plans and updated. So any, any of those previous concerns, I think have already been included in that contractor's supplemental package.
Great, thank you. Director Duff?
I just wanted to compliment all of the workers down there, uh, driving on the freeway and seeing that building at night and the lights, the way they glow and, and the way that they have taken care to ensure that all of the shielding is, is right to keep the glow down instead of polluting our stars and and the color scape at night. It's just very beautiful, actually from the freeway. So I just wanted, it reminded me of what a work of art, this industrial um, construction project is in some ways. And so I just wanted to thank the craftsmanship that has gone into it and all the hard work that has been done by all the many hands that have placed a part of it. Thank you.
Vice President Griffin? And I have nothing further. Thank you very much, Terry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item fifteen, critical services center and administrative building update.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our project manager from Reno Clark to give this presentation. Alvin?
Thank you, General Manager Mason. Uh, good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board, district staff. Get my screen up. And while that's going, uh, last we spoke, um, in the update, we were still in a very conceptual uh, level for the site plan. Uh, and we were working on a lot of the ancillary items going through. Uh, since then, we are starting to land a lot more of the programmatic elements uh, more definitively and working what we would consider at this point uh, tetrising those pieces into place, considering that, uh, again, we're going from a much larger site to a smaller site. So we're doing our best to fit those programmatic, programmatic elements. I'll walk you through, uh, where we are today. So as you drive down Park Lane, you'll be greeted at the corner uh, with an area that we're going to be defining as a demonstration garden. So within this demonstration garden, we're anticipating to show a lot of the different planting prototypes that the district um, showcases on their website and allow people to either come into the site, park here, walk in, potentially even walk in from the street or come in from the park side and make their way to this area. And again, demonstrating the different various planning types, styles or groupings. Um, and also providing a, had a small gathering place here too. So, uh, if the district wants to show a little tour and present, uh, some of these various planting types to the public or small groups, say classrooms or, uh, other groups as well. And then from there, uh, you'll be able to walk. And then from there, you'll be able to walk back across this drive. And we have our main entry to the building at this point. From there, we're seeing people if they're coming in either to pay their bills, to have meeting with meetings with various district staff. Or going to the boardroom for meetings. From the boardroom side, we do have what we're considering a overflow event space adjacent to that. So whether that's tied to board meetings or different events, the ability to go outside. And we have a small covered area that we're planning on dropping here, very similar to what we had in the previous design as well. And then moving on to the more southern portion of the site. We're also looking at providing some soft scape along the southern border here, and we're. Trying to see if that ties to the demonstration garden piece, or if it will basically be overflow for district staff. As they exit the building on the outside for lunches, meetings, or. Also, we're looking to create different spaces back here, whether for meditation, wellness, gula spaces, as we like to call them as well. And then how this ties into the public piece. We'll work through that with district staff on how they want to operate on that. And then moving to the back of the site, this area is where we're looking to put the general staff parking along with fleet parking. And then further down from there is the operations area and building. We had a meeting with the supervisors of the district. To start really defining the needs in this area because again, with the tighter site, we have a lot more constraints. So there's going to definitely be some challenges there, but as we start working more closely with the district staff, I think we'll. We'll be able to identify any potential challenges and or issues and work to resolve those as quickly as possible. We also are showing various different site materials. So there's going to be a lot of concrete around the operations area because for us, that's a much more robust material for trucks. As they're turning, as we're unloading, offloading items and just generally working in and out of the operations building. Within the staff parking area and at the entry here, this will just be asphalt. We are also looking to add in pavers and these could potentially be permeable papers as well. Because we have a lot of very impervious, potentially impervious materials throughout the site. So to help ease runoff and control that, we're looking to find areas that we could potentially add a little bit more. Permeal paving as well. Along with a lot of decomposed granite around the building, intermixed with small concrete pathways. And landscaping as well. And let's see. Beyond the site plan, I did also want to show general progress as we. Along with the the site, as I mentioned, we are exploring to make sure that there's adequate turning radius. A radii for fire trucks for district staff, vehicles and deliveries. But this portion here begins what we're putting together for the city planning supplemental. So again, we have the floor plan that we're keeping mostly intact from the previous design. We did flip it. So that is now reflected in the in the drawings. Can continuing to develop plans. We have our extra elevations. I know we presented a lot of this previously, but. Just to quickly go over that again here, a couple of different materials that we're using along the exterior, some stone. A lot of plaster. Again, within a desert palette, there will be some accents of tile that we're looking at as well. And then similar on the other elevations as well. And then moving into the operations building, again, how this operates within the new site will be. A challenge just because of the impact and sizing, but we're hoping to keep this building as intact as possible from the previous design. And adjust its location and or adjust the site as necessary to make sure it functions properly. And again, same general palette for the exterior of this building as well. And that wraps that up. The only other items we're working with the district right now, we just finished a utility survey. We're working to get a topographic survey done. The district has brought on the environmental team to work on an exemption for CECL and. I think that wraps up most of the big items that we're juggling right now. So are there any questions?
Director Duff.
I just am very impressed. You have manipulated a smaller area to appear extremely efficient. And it looks beautiful. Good job. I did want to ask if we were incorporating like on the asphalt area, are we incorporating? I know you mentioned the permeable tiles, but I've heard of the like areas in Arizona where they're using this. Heat reducing asphalt surface. I don't know if it's possible that we look into that, or I don't know if you already have and it's not applicable here, but. Anything that we can give as examples to the community of ways in which we can reduce. The the heat island that we are part of, right? And any way that we can give a demonstration of that where it's affordable. And feasible. So I just kind of wanted to mention that, but I'm just very impressed with the way you've manipulated space and it really does look beautiful. Thank you.
Vice President Griffin.
Uh, yeah, I I kind of have to concur. It's it's kind of really fantastic. I did have a question though. Regarding the, I see we had the public parking and then we have the demonstration garden. Will that all be? Behind security gates at night?
I apologize. I I we did discuss that with General Manager Macy. And currently what we're looking to do is have the building be one of the primary lines of security. And then have small pieces of fencing coming off of this corner. And we're still working on how it's going to land on this corner as well. But the entirety of the front and the demonstration garden will be very public facing and open to them.
Okay, that's I. The only reason I have a concern is that plant theft is quite common out here. And I do have a concern about us investing in. In all these plants and then next thing you know, and all you have to do is look at social media. Is somebody comes along at night, rips them all out, throws them in the back of the truck and off they go. So that's just something to.
Understood.
Trying to hold all the visual things that we're trying to accomplish with the building, the way it's out, the way it's aligned and things of that nature. We were wanting to try to keep that in a visual sightline, but. If that is an issue, then we'll simply just extend the fencing all the way through it and only have them open during the day when we're actually at the facility.
That's kind of what I was thinking would be the safe thing to do.
Okay, and I and that's what Alvin and I talked about doing to let it, just to make sure that we weren't making the wrong decision. But if that is the wishes of the board, then we'll go ahead and fence the whole thing because we had the same concern. Alvin made it very clear that we may have an issue. And we were trying to talk about a smaller fence or something a little bit less intrusive and then going to something more significant. But if we feel that we need to be more significant now, then this is.
Yeah, I think especially given the location. Okay, you know, once we're gone, there's not probably or there's no gains, even while the games are going on, there's probably. Not much traffic down. There's going to deter anybody. So it's just a.
Good impact or a good quick, good comment. Director Martin.
Yeah, following up. Vice President Griffith, that. I'd like to see us explore the possibility of. Private security being looked into contract wise and see if you can. Time your staff and. And the more members are not pleasant.
We can do that. Director Mayhaff.
Yes, I agree with Director Martin and Vice President Griffin. Between the parking lot. And the entryway here you have, there's a block wall there now. And that was put there to protect. The corporate yard from vandalism. But that didn't work. They climbed over the block wall. That's why you see a chain link fence two feet away from that block wall. And there's Bob wire on top of it. And that's how they cured people from coming in. They're even have problems down there. I've been saying that for since the beginning of this location. It's just. I still don't agree with the whole thing, but anyways, yeah, you're going to have to put some kind of security in there for this. Vandalism of the garden. Vice President Griffith said, you won't have any plants left. Now, my next problem here with this is that. The parking in the front for our customers. Are there going to be, I see you have a little, a little section there of parking. But is there really enough parking? Because they're going to have to, I realize you're going to use that. Which I don't agree with either, using the. Houston Springs Park parking. So now they're going to, their customers are going to have to drive in there all the way down to the end of the of the parking lot for the park and then walk in. And I think that's just going to be an inconvenience. The next thing is. I'm glad you're having some open spaces. I like to see some open spaces for our workers, walk out of the office building. And go have lunch. I noticed here in our parking lot, some of them are sitting in their cars, eating their lunch. I don't know why we can't get a picnic table out there between the two buildings here, but. Guess not. So, yeah, I really feel it's important for. Our workers, as you, as you know, sir, that. The importance of having that outdoor space. Now, all the way over to the right of the plan here, and you see where there's a half a pond. But this makes no sense to me whatsoever. You're already moving the property. So now you're going to spend money on a half of a pond to put up some kind of retention wall. Put in soil, compact the other one, and then you're cramming yourself in here. We have plenty of space on the other side. Of the Horton treatment plant to the east. So why not just move to get rid of the half a half a pond? And and extend this out to give us more room for what we need to do. I believe our gardens already at half the. The size that it was originally. And we applied for a grant. So now we're shrinking the garden down. What's that going to do with the grant in the future? Anyways. Then then there's the, I brought up General Manager Macy tonight, and so as long as I already brought it up, he's prepared for it. Park lane, when you get out to Palm Drive. We've got our workers and they're not doing anything wrong. I did do them the same thing. They're getting up there and they're making a right hand turn because they can't turn left because of all the traffic. And they're pulling any of either the pizza place or the. Grocery outlet to make their U-turn and go back heading south. And the city already understands this problem because everybody's pulling out of. By Del Taco to turn back to go south. They're getting in that turn lane to go into where Starbucks is, and they're making a U-turn there. It's not a legal U-turn. You're supposed to go all the way to the stoplight. So there's some traffic issues there and that's going to slow our. Our guys down coming in and out of there unless we paid on the other side of the Horton Treatment Plant and have that road access there. So once again, folks, I hate to say it, I'm not against building a new building. I think it's just a bad idea to put it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond? I just want to respond to a couple of quick things. The pond that you see only half of, it will be relocated to the east. We are going to move that pond and the pond next to it and. And create two ponds. We have the ability to, and that's been part of the plan from day one. We cut right now, Reno Clark is focusing on the five acres that were disturbing or just excuse me, the four point nine nine acres that we're disturbing right now. And not looking at regroading, regrading was to the east. So that will be taken care of and we'll have adequate space between the two. We won't need any embankment or anything like that because we will have a driveway and things like that, like we currently have around our ponds right now. The other comment about the demonstration garden being a little bit smaller and why we're doing what we're doing here. Is we are trying right now to stay within a CECL exemption area of four point nine nine acres. We talked about it at lunch and we're probably going to continue to talk about some of the issues that that has created. Some of the things that you're looking at now, for example, the bays in the operation building are now toward the building. So when people are coming in to make that turn, it's going to be a little bit more difficult because they can't pull through straight. And that's some of the things that we're talking about. The whole reason was we wanted to stay within a CECL exemption. But we may not be able to do that. If you recall, when we were looking at the sizes of the East Valley Plant, it was over five acres. It wasn't by much. It was like three point three or five point three or five point five. This is four point nine nine. You wouldn't think those point three acres makes a big deal, but it has. And that's where. This this site plan was presented to our supervisors on Wednesday. And they had very the similar same concerns about getting through this site at the current, at the current size. So we are going to evaluate that. If we do go a secret, go through a secret process with a bigger site and can't move these buildings around to make sure we have adequate clearance, then we'll bring that to the board as well. But right now, this is where we're at with this process.
My 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 thought on this is that. We're shrinking down the size to get around an environmental impact.
No, no, we're, we were trying to stay within a specific size. We still have the Horton facility next to us that is. Specific to wastewater operations and we use it now to currently fix that issue we're making reference to about making a left hand turn on the park. When our bigger trucks go there, and we talked about this in my office, the smaller vehicles will have to work on because they shouldn't be doing that. If it's illegal, but safety concern will take care of it. However, the bigger vehicles that have to leave this yard typically do not go up. To that intersection and do the right hand turn that you suggested. What they actually do is they go down through the Horton plant, come out on Verbena and go north and turn a left. On two bunch. So we already have our own operation policies and procedures to address the left hand turn going down Palm Drive. And that's always going to be incorporated in here. Right now, they're focused on staying specifically in the footprint. However, the avenues or the. Driveways that allow us to go to the east will remain.
Try this again. Anything under five acres, you won't need. That environmental impact report, correct?
We we would, we would qualify for an infill CECL exemption.
Right, so we're keeping it under five acres. Over that five acres, then we'll need.
That correct.
Impact report. So rather than, you're still going to need an air quality report.
There are some specific things that we do need to complete. We do have to look at air. We do have to look at any type of habitat that may be there. Or maybe have created there since we've inhabited that location. Also, a traffic study has been required. So there are still a lot of requirements that we have to do. It's just not the whole secret process. There are still parts of it that we have to do and we are working with the city to complete those.
So we're designing this, not knowing if we can get through those.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said.
No, that's what I just said.
Well, we're not doing that.
Not doing that. Well. I think that we should just go ahead and use what land we need, if it goes over that five acres. File the proper reports that we need to file. We don't need to shrink anything down. That way we have room for expansion later. We have a bigger garden. And I I just don't agree with it. But anyways, yes, you know, I'm going to need a air quality report.
Well, and also, this is where we are today, not where we may end up when the project is complete in April and in May. So we still have the ability and that's why we're bringing it to the board for comments. So we understand where you're at and we're having the same conversation, internal discussions ourselves.
Well, my final comment is, is that no matter who I've talked to, they've always gone and got, gone out and made sure their environmental problems. Were all taken care of before they spend two million dollars on plans. And this is the second time we've gone through that.
And we haven't spent two million dollars on plans, Director. We've been over this multiple times.
Million eight hundred thousand and.
That's not true. That is not true.
Lots of paperwork I've been getting every time we talk about.
That's a contract. It's not how much we've spent.
I just have a couple of questions. I believe it was pretty much answered, but on the west side there. Is the parking lot not going to be seamless over into, it will just be that small access point? I know previous renderings, I think we saw where it was, it seemed like the parking lot for the park was going to be. Mostly utilized for visitors. I know we have the eleven spots right there, but should we overflow? Will it just be that one access point? Or will that wall not be there?
Currently, we do have it so that you don't have to go through the park, parking lot in order to get into the critical service facility. Um, originally, we were showing uh, one of the major connections through here, but I think this gives you a little bit more flexibility. We can always add this. Uh, connection later, uh, but I think it's better served having it to be independent. So for instance, if there is an event that happens at the park, it doesn't. Impact, you know, people going on to this facility. But again, uh, we do wanna create a nice connection between these two elements. Right now, it's just a walking path, pedestrian path. But we do have an allowance down here and room to make it work. So you could have a vehicular path as well.
Okay, and then um, I'm assuming this is the most recent. I think there's maybe the third or fourth slide you had. There were some parking spots in that demonstration garden island area.
Yeah, that was a previous to that. We're still working through that. So I apologize if that was confusing at all.
And then uh, just a question, maybe more for staff. Um, I'm not. I don't know how often the backfill area is utilized. Is that something that would give us extra space if it was somehow located either at Horton or the regional plant?
We have commented on that with Renault Clark and we're also working with staff to see what we can do with that area because there is other areas on this facility where we can do those. Do those operations. We just actually talked about it at lunch today. So we're still working through some of the. We just started seeing this, like I said, yesterday and we've added comments. We're also gonna be providing more comments, but yes, we are gonna be looking at. Basically, the entire facility to make sure that we have adequate uh, driving lanes. If we do not, then we'll go over five acres and we'll do the entire sequel process.
And um, just to confirm, uh, the building and the operation building has not changed size. I know there was a talk about a possible um. Like flex area not being built. As it stands here, is it still the full size?
Currently, it is the full size. When we go to bid, we may then add some alternates to remove spaces to, in a, in a hopes to maybe save money or postpone certain. Um, future expansions, but that's something we'll work through as we go through the contract documentations and the bidding process. But right now, we are building everything we've built at the Two Bunch location here. Okay.
As far as, I'm sorry, as far as expansion goes, perhaps. It could be incorporated in the design uh, where if we decide to expand, we can add a second floor.
Director Martin, it's very hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, my suggestion is that we design the facility such that uh, in the future, if we decide to expand, that we can add a second floor. Rather than, than move out if that's possible, so.
That's something we can work with uh, Renault Clark on to see if it's cost effective, but just for um. Just as a reminder, this size, I, I don't know exactly how many employees, but I think it's, well, it's over ninety. So that's a pretty big number for what we can put in here. Now, some of those would be cubicles and some smaller spaces that you saw at East Valley, but we do have a lot of expansion opportunities here.
If, if I may, D, DWA does have their building designed. So they can come in and put a second story in. The problem with that is, is that over the years, coding or, or building codes have changed. So you could spend the money to design it to have a second floor today, but ten, twenty years down the road. And will it be able to pass those, those codes to put a second story on? I would rather see that we just, if we're gonna spend extra money like that. That we just have the space to expand out later on and then use. Build it to lead green standards because if we don't do it to the lead green standards, then we're having a negative impact on the environment by building this building. Which means that. We're kind of in defiance with sequels, not a uh. A law that we have to do it. It's just one of their suggestions. So if we're not going with their suggestion and we go to. Get grant money, then we're not in compliance with their suggestion. It's gonna make it harder to get grant money also. So. I think that we need to really take a look at. How far down the road we're going and with the lead green. It'll cost a couple percent more to build it that way. But you'll start looking at twenty, thirty percent savings in utility costs throughout the years.
Anything further? I'd say, uh, given the parameters, it's uh. Looking good and it's good to see the progress. I look forward to our next update. So thank you very much, Alvin.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, consists of item sixteen, approval of minutes and item seventeen, register of demands. Would anyone like to pull either of those items to discuss? Uh, Vice President Griffith?
Uh, I have some questions on the registered demand. On page one, there is a two um, line items for answer phone answering service. I wasn't aware we had an answering service. Can you tell me about this?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, President Sewell and Vice President Griffith. Uh, we have a um, after hour service. Uh, whenever, uh, at five o'clock, our phones get turned off and get into night mode uh, for emergencies. So um, of this answering service, what they do is they take the name and then forward the uh, customer for an emergency to our after hours crew. Who then show up at the property to help with whatever needs done.
Okay. Uh, page three. Um, DWA rack fee for IDE. Can you tell me, remind me what IDE is?
That is our second section, uh, wide water area uh, primarily with it. We saw, have to separate. The uh, two sections of the district into the different uh, uh, water uh. Where we're providing water services to.
We never get recharge for it. We get recharge for it?
Based on the way it was explained to us by DWA when they were here. The, it's the common good of the entire basin and by putting it where they do, the benefit goes to the entire basin.
That's it.
I believe the thought would be that by putting the water there, it's not coming down off the hill as fast. But that would be something that we'd have to ask DWA. The rep. The IDE are up on top, basically on top of the hill, if you will, and the repart, replenishment ponds are down in, in the basin.
The wells for that are still the same substances.
They, they are.
That's, that's what I wasn't clear about.
Yeah, and those charges are based on constant, consideration, yeah.
Okay, and then page five, urban habitat, two invoices.
Are you asking why there's two invoices?
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, I don't know if you see the description. It's for two different months. Uh, and it's just basically catching up the payment to uh, our vendors.
Yeah, it doesn't say, it just says landscape services. It doesn't say two different months, it's just one. One is uh, February twenty second, one is February twenty ninth.
Okay, uh, what are the two amounts?
I've got a fifty nine hundred and fifty five fifty.
Yeah, I believe that's what it is. It's uh, sometimes we get an invoice, uh, like at the uh, at the end of the month. It doesn't get captured until the next month. Um, and then the, the next one comes in earlier. So you usually, that's usually when that happens, but I will confirm and um, follow up.
And they're for past services, not future?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, let's go ahead.
Anything further on registered domain? The Director Duff?
Thank you, President. Um, quick question on the sidewalk repairs. Can I um, ask why and where?
Danny, do you know, do you have that answer?
Um, it says B eight one paving ink, February twenty ninth, eleven thousand, twenty dollars. Oh, page one, sorry.
No problem. Actually, after you said that, uh, that made sense. Good afternoon again. B eighty one is currently our paving contractor. We had a massive um, repair and in this case it took out sidewalk. And that's one of the things that's in their uh, business schedule of services that they provide. So primarily is paving restoration, but they also have a item where they do concrete. And the size of that was a little bit more than what our staff would typically do. And that's what they did. They came in and repaired uh, some curb and gutter and sidewalk.
That's exactly what I need to know. Thank you.
Anything good? And did anyone have anything they want to pull on the minute? But you're still on, go ahead.
I, I actually found where I highlighted. Um, on page uh, three. Four thousand and, oh, four thousand dollars for Home Depot. How did I miss that shopping spree?
Uh, that is our monthly credit card charge. It is uh, composed of several uh, smaller purchases. We can provide the detail that you uh, want. Uh, it's just the total payment that has to be done at the end of the month.
Somebody give me an example of what they would be buying at Home Depot for that four thousand?
Uh, a lot of the.
A lot of different items, but.
Uh, a lot of the times, it's an emergency item that we cannot readily get from one of our regular vendors. Um, so it has to get, that work has to be completed. Within a day or two and the staff has to go get that item. Uh, that's just one of the examples that I can provide.
Okay, makes sense.
If you want the detail, I can provide that.
Oh, that's, that's okay this time. I know we're looking at workshops, looking at redoing some things and I think it'll be. More self-explanatory once we get through that and I just.
And thank you for the question. One of the things that we're doing right now is all of our credit card charges, we're looking to split them out to provide the individual details, not just the total paid for that month. So you'll probably see that starting next month. Uh, we're gonna be showing you individual charges as opposed to a one-time payment, so to provide additional information.
Yeah, that's all I have for now and I, I'm glad it, it's getting better and it's more. I think we're on the right track with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone want to pull the minutes? Nope. Um, thank you, Arturo. Moving on to reports, directors reports. Does anyone want to give their report today? Monday?
Um, Monday, but I just like to say it was champion. You're right, it was on page twenty five. I just hadn't had it. I didn't get my highlighter out till I went through about half of this because my memory isn't so good. I figured I'd need to get it out. So that, that was the page. Thank you.
Item nineteen, general manager's report. We have organizational update, finance report and public affairs report. Will any of these be today?
Knowing that it's getting close to five o'clock, um, I would ask that we postpone the finance report and affairs report, but I would like to go over the organizational update. Just for the board real quick. Uh, as you know, as general manager, I do have the authority to make changes to positions and things of that nature, as long as I don't add a new position. Or exceed the total budget for wages and salary compensation. Basically, if I stay within the current salary matrix and stay within our budget, I can make just about any change that I would like. That's my job as a general manager. Even though I have the ability to do that, I would never do that. I would wanna make sure that the board is aware of what we're trying to accomplish. Um. With that being said, I would like to um, fill the AGM position. It's been open for some time now and Marion's helped out in a variety of different things. And I know that was some of the things that was talked about uh, when I was made the interim GM and I would like to promote her to AGM. And then reclassify her position to a business analyst position. And then start filling that process so we can continue to do some of the things that we're doing with conservation, some of the other updates we're doing with laser fish and some of the other processes that we're working on. We've been, we have somebody on staff that's been doing that and I can do those two items um, right now and I would like to do that.
For the public that is watching AGM as assistant general manager.
Correct, thank you. Um, now, moving forward, there are other changes that we wanna make. Uh, we do have three positions that we're looking at. Uh, two of those positions are opening because of retirement and because of um. Uh, rec, um, excuse me, resignation. So I have two open positions that I'd like to look at as well as a reclassification of a current position. Um, but those would require to come to the board and I'll be bringing those in April. I just wanna keep the board aware of what's going on and you will be seeing a new matrix and an organizational chart with that uh, in the April meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Director Martin?
Only thing I can say is uh, congratulations to Marion. Uh, well deserved. You put in a lot of hard work. And it is definitely appreciated by the board. Congratulations.
Director Maya?
Um, yes, I was gonna ask the question about the general, our assistant general manager, but I think you made a good choice and. Yeah, it'll work out fine. Thank you.
Director Duff?
I was a little surprised, not that, uh, not a wonderful choice, just wasn't expecting the, the comments today. I pleasantly surprised them. And what a great month to do it and. Uh, Women's Month, so to speak, and I'm very happy to see that choice.
And not that it, it happened by sheer coincidence that today's her birthday as well.
Vice President Griffin?
I don't know, sometimes she looks a little shoddy, but I'll let you be the judge of that. Speaking of organizational changes, so I, I wrote some notes um. Over the past month about some of the stuff that I, I have concerns about. And uh, I mean, let's be honest, so I kinda dug through this TKE stuff and, and some of it kinda concerns me. So I see this pattern of some of these projects coming back for increased amounts. For various reasons and I wanna share my concerns and so one is um. So when we got the, it, which comes on Monday, the original report was, well, they were doing things outside the scope of the contract. That's, that's what it said. And so um. I, I'm kinda like, well, why are they doing things outside the scope of the contract? And I have had conversations with people. So full transparency about this and some of it is that, I, I think that um. Probably our staff is a little overstretched in terms of the amount of work, especially if you look at these projects, you look at these books now. Um, I know that you guys are doing a really good job of getting this stuff together and getting it to us, but then. How much of that extra work is actually getting dumped? Not dumped, but I mean, you know, added to the staff's normal process. And so. I wanna know, what are the things we can do to maybe reduce the cost of some of these tasks? So when I looked at. These, all these invoices, it seems like a large part of the engineering budget is this kinda stuff. Is that correct? Would you?
With the amount of capital improvement projects we have right now, yes.
Okay, and so um. What I say, ask is, would it be feasible and save the district money if we were to bring some of this work in-house as opposed to constantly outsourcing it, right? So when I look at the consulting breakdown and I look at this. And I see, so here's construction manager, one forty-five an hour. Now, uh, I meant to ask this earlier, but I didn't. So a lot of this construction coordination is Steve Ledbetter, who's a VP. And it is one forty-five an hour, what we're getting charged for his work, do you know?
I believe his compensation may be a little bit more than that, but I think it's one seventy-five if I'm not mistaken. Um. I know it's been on some of those invoices, but I think it's one seventy-five.
Okay, so, so you've got someone that's doing construction manager, but charging thirty dollars more than what it says here, right? So the one seventy-five, is that a flat rate? Is that a loaded rate? Does that include all the other stuff or?
That is a loaded rate.
Okay, so what would typically be um. A standard multiplier for contracts?
Arturo, do you? Thank you, Vice President Griffith. Uh, our current multiplier for a full rate is one point thirty-five of the uh, hourly rate. And that is part of our, our budget to, when we present that, we can easily see what those numbers are.
Let me clarify, that is MSWD's staff rate, not necessarily TKE.
Correct.
What, do you know what TKE?
I, I don't. Without requiring them to provide us what benefits they get, it would be impossible for us to know that.
Okay, um, so we do, we, I mean, we do some manpower, is it manpower?
Yes.
And what was, what's their multiplier? Do we know?
We don't, for the same reason.
It's one point four five.
Correct.
For office staff and for field staff, I think it's a little bit less.
Correct.
So let's say one point four five. It's a little higher than ours, right? So if I did one seventy-five. Five, then we're looking at a cost of about a hundred and twenty an hour, not including the multiplier. What would that equivalent, what would the equivalent be here at MSWD for a, a rate of one twenty as a salary?
Uh, that would be a rate increase for even myself.
Okay, so basically, we're paying more for looking at some bills and having meetings. Than we pay you for running this operation, what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, would it not be in our best interest to maybe get a position that will fulfill this, maybe? Director of Engineering to let the staff do this and then that person oversees the bigger picture or some other similar staff and, and. Would that not save us some money in the long run?
I don't know how, if it would save us money in the long run, but based on what we've discussed here today with making some assumptions about multipliers. If our multiplier is less than manpower's, I'm guessing it's less than TKEs, so I think the answer would possibly be yes.
Well, I mean, it seems kinda obvious. Well, I mean, it seems kind of obvious to me that if we're taking some things away from someone who's making more money than you and paying somebody for a job that's gonna be less than what you're making, we would in theory make less money. I mean, that's basic math, right?
I agree.
Um I think if you're gonna do, and I accept that, bring it to the board, but I I think that you should seriously consider doing something like that, having someone over engineering that makes sure that our people are doing this clerical kind of stuff. And uh coordinating, since that seems to be the word of the day, all this stuff um and save us some money in the long run. So I would make a recommendation, and I'm happy if it's it comes up on Monday to make a motion that you consider uh opening that kind of position and advertising for it. So I don't, I would like to hear what the rest of the board thinks about this, but when I look at every time we turn around, someone's got, needs more money, why are we putting this out to other companies when we could just hire somebody and then we have direct oversight and we know uh that the other person, because if this is outside of the scope of their service, are they able to do their job in an effective manner? So when I see a bulletin that takes six months, and I get some of that is back and forth with other people, but how many times is that just set aside, because now I'm focused on this? As opposed to someone who's, this is specifically gonna do this, and now we have, we're getting a whole new enterprise system that will allow us to track it. It just makes more sense to me that we take control and save some money. So I I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks, but that's my feeling on this subject.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not going too far off a topic on this, but
I I think that the comments relate to um moving in-house with some of the work that's being done by consultants. So I think it does relate to organizational the organizational issues that were addressed by the general manager. However, going to the point of requesting that a motion be made, I think it should be agendized separately. If you're gonna have a more detailed discussion other than comments on the update that was given, and you want to have the ability to make a motion, then I think you should agendize it, and then you can have the full debate and discussion and make a motion. So I think that'd be the way.
Okay, I I definitely think it's the duty of the board to try and do our best to help staff reduce costs and probably re- increase efficiency as well. Um is this something maybe more information? I feel like you've definitely thought through it a lot more than the other four of us, maybe, but um so this specifically.
I wanna I wanna add something else. Um so there are certain responsibilities that are the general managers, right? And that's managing the staff and deciding organizationally how to structure it, and then you have the ability to evaluate the general manager's performance. Um I think where the a vote would be relevant would be if you're expanding the positions. You're expanding your uh salary schedule, for example, you're creating new positions, budgeting for those new positions, that's where the board would come into play.
I'm just thinking, is this something we could put on a future workshop where we could really have more discussion? And dig into some numbers to get some better examples and maybe staff's input as far as would that be beneficial? Time wise?
I I think a workshop would be the perfect opportunity. Um but just from the way that the the calendar works out for the month of April, our workshop actually is after our April meeting. So if we wanted to do something it um in next month, the workshop would be after the salary matrix discussion that I was making reference to. So from that perspective, I could bring that as an item in April. And then if we wanted to further that particular discussion, then we could do it at a workshop, but I could bring it back to you in April. That's still, you know, four or five weeks away. And I could bring that as part of that salary matrix update discussion. And that would, that way it would be agendized.
I'm fine with that, but uh do we have comments?
Yeah, just one thing I we have a a number of um projects underway that are very, very large projects and stuff like that, because there may come a time where we go four, five, six months where we wouldn't need the input from that that employee who has a specialization to to do this, where we would ordinarily go out and get a, you know, contract when it's needed. So I have to take a look at that on on whether or not that would be cost effective.
Director Martin, you make a per- a good point. The reason that we do have T K E and on-call services is because there are things that fluctuate. And we use our consultants to take those peaks and shave them off, so we can continue the project moving forward. But also to Director Griffith's, or excuse me, Vice President Griffith's point. When you look at our C I P and what we're talking about doing for the next five or six years, maybe even ten years to twenty years, if you start talking about the backyard easements, we are going to have projects where someone like this would be able to do them in-house versus going out for a C M. So I I I hear what you're saying, and it's exactly the historical thing that we've done in the past, but a couple of different things. We've never
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we eliminate the whole concept. I am suggesting
Just be cognizant.
And and what, by which positions that we 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 contract out and which positions we we get a get a position within our, within our dr-
We'll look, we'll look at a couple of different options. We'll look at a variety of different engineering positions and try to, and as our legal counsel said, we'll try to bring forward our best recommendations. So we may bring you a couple of different ideas. But I think focusing possibly on a director of engineering for some of the higher level stuff that we're talking about today would be prudent too. So we'll look, we'll look at all of that in the next couple of months or a couple of weeks, excuse me.
Uh general manager, Macy, I just want to make sure that also we look at the fact that some of this uh is moving uh funds from a contract perspective that's already been approved. Uh so make sure, to for staff to make sure that it will not affect a contract that has already been executed in moving those uh projects and funds from uh something that's already been uh laid out.
Correct, it would be for future projects, not current. Thank you.
Director Maya?
Yes, thank you. Uh Vice President Griffith, I understand what you're saying, and I've I've been having the same thoughts for quite a while. When we look at some of these things that we're paying for with outside, going outside of the district to get it done, it's getting to be very costly, so we ha- always have been. But our our workshop, or you you brought up the the point and Director Depp brought up a another point. When we know, when we keep track of how many man-hours it takes to do something, and when we get that put in place, then we can come back and take a look at how we're gonna go about outsourcing things. There's some of this in-house stuff that we talked about, and I got to thinking, geez, that's almost two months of one of our employees full time. At that price. So I'm on board with what you're saying there, uh Vice President Griffith and Director Martin, and and everybody's saying, I I think we need to to wait until we get every other things in place so we can, no problem.
So we probably ought to move on and and then agendize it, and then that'll give you the opportunity as a group to have a much more in-depth conversation.
Is it okay for Director Depp, who hasn't made a comment?
Yeah, I I just want to make sure we don't get into debating the merits of the ultimate outcome as opposed to just providing comments and response to the
Director Depp?
Thank you. I'll just uh respond to Vice President Griffith's initial request, and that is yes, I agree um that I would like to ask our general manager to please bring that to us in an agenda to um definitely look at bringing work inside. And the only additional comment that I'll make is that I think I've said this from day one. Anytime we can give someone here, someone in our valley, a job here that's permanent, that becomes a permanent fixture of our family, is something that is always beneficial in my mind. So, thank you.
And my last thing was just uh, again, I agree with all this, looking forward to next month. I'm gonna go back to the uh congratulations and happy birthday to Marion. I think that's what started all this, but um last week, uh M S W D spoke at our Rotary uh meeting, and Marion, I think, drew the short straw, and she got up and talked and um she had questions not even really relevant to our district coming in about Salt and Sea and energy and this and that, and man, she was on top of it, and Brian and I were just looking back and forth like, I'm glad she's up there. But uh I think she's deserving and very well qualified, so congratulations, happy birthday. And we'll move on to district council comments, item twenty.
Yes, um some of the items that we've been working on recently for the district include uh the appeal on the Mission Springs versus D W A case. There was a hearing at the appellate court in San Diego, and that occurred on Tuesday. Um March twelfth, it was available for folks to watch remotely if they were interested. Um the case is under submission by the appellate court at this time, and we'll provide a more updated uh debriefing on that on Monday in closed session, and that'll give you an opportunity to ask questions and we can have a discussion. And then also, uh we've assisted the district on employment, labor and employment related matters. Um we also continue to work uh on behalf of the district related to the acquisition of an easement from S C E. That's needed in connection with the uh regional plant, and then also working with staff on updating some policies. Uh working with this uh district on analyzing a potential duplication of services issue. Um in addition to that, working with the district on an effort to codify its ordinances and resolutions and providing advice on public contracting matters, and that's my report.
And will there be a closed session today?
I don't think we need it, do you, Brian?
No.
Yeah, I, no.
Okay. Item twenty one, director comments and requests for future agenda items. Director Martin? Director Maya? Director Depp? Vice President Griffith?
I just got mine.
Perfect, and I have nothing further, and with the no closed session today, we'll adjourn the meeting.